And that would help to address the root of the problem, you say no?
I say they won't because they've been warned not to tell anybody.
Okay, so he's saying they probably won't because they're scared. They're probably won't because then this will continue in the home if you bring it up to other people, right? So let's take a step back. If we think that it's maybe not a safe situation to share at school, we already just talked about medical resources, we talked about the church. If you're a child and you feel like you can't tell anybody, tell me what the solution is.
Talk to a family member.
Family member.
That's the next one, family member.
Or a friend of the family, close friend.
Okay.
Well, during the time though, if they number nobody for talk to, they end up cutting themselves or they commit suicide, everything just follow up.
Yeah, so she says possibly they'll start to harm themselves if they can't find an outlet. I think all of that's us though, right? If you can't find an outlet, you start to do things that you know will resolve the issue, whether it's drinking or drugs or trying to find a solution to either pacify yourself or maybe go away, right? So how do we solve this problem where maybe there's DV in the home, right? People might not feel welcome to bring it up. How do you become the family member that they can confide in or that they can share with?
Check in, check in with your family members.
Check in, tell me how you check in.
Family functions, uh, see if they go to the regional meeting, invite them for camp home, stop by the house, bring dinner.
Check in, check in, I want us to expand on that. I want you guys to think to yourself, what is check in equal? Because I think for a lot of us when we go to functions or we go see our cousins or, I mean, we just straight to everybody our age, yeah? Oh, what's up everybody, like, hey, get out of my way guys, go find your cousins, get out of here, go have fun. Like, most of the time we just immediately split into age groups when we go to family functions, right? So she says check in, somebody be real specific with me. How do we check in in a more intentional way with our nieces, nephews, even our kids that play sports with us? How do we check in?
Be a mentor maybe.
Be a mentor like how?
Be involved with, if they're gonna be either be spirits or a church group or a group itself that you stay involved with the children.
Okay, so he says be a mentor, how?
Really with younger kids, we're just gonna talk with them. Really, you're just gonna have a conversation with them. Because the more you talk with them, the more these kids are likely to open up and they're gonna say something. They're gonna, eventually it's gonna come out, you're just gonna have a conversation.
Asking your child like, how was school, what did you do? You know, like the simple question, like that simple question can lead a lot to the child.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not to bring up my own example, but I still don't even do that well with my own parents. With my own parents, I mean, we barely chit chat, ever. So I think it's something that actually starts from a young age, whether or not you're real open with your kids, right? However you act towards them when they're young, that's actually how you act towards them and you get older too. Because my parents were never like that growing up and they're never like that now, but it's just because that's just how we were, like, just don't share, we just don't share anything. So how do we check in in a more intentional way by just talking, whatever? Tell me what the frequency looks like. Because we over here saying that we'll talk to somebody, but like how often, when?
When you hear something in that conversation, it's gonna lead you to want to know more, to be more concerned like, whoa, okay, my niece just told me this, but let's see, you know what I mean? You're gonna follow up, you're gonna say, hey, call her up, hey, let's go to the hospital, just be something. But just to keep doing that and it's gonna eventually build this trust with the child and eventually it's gonna come out if there is something taking place that if it's her mom or if it's the actor, whoever it is.
Okay, so let's, let's take that farther then. Say some child on your sports team confides in you and tells you something about somebody hurting them, what do you do? Now I'm being serious. Come front the hair?
I think, no, but not the first person. But I think you can put it upon them to like other coach, to their parent as well, ask yourself what would you do, I think, what you'll call the first person as in anybody that is obedient with that kind of thing or the program or Jason asked questions, how could I approach the problem sooner or sooner?
Okay, so let's, let's parse that out. Would you, I want you to see raise your hand, would you call a parent first or would you call a, like, support services, meaning like a line, a health line? Support services.
Jason asked questions, like, what can they, what can they do to take?
Okay, got it. So she's saying she would call support services, not to disclose everything, but to say, hey, guide me. Yeah, guide me, the child told me that they're hurting themselves, guide me what I do, okay?
I mean, it gets tricky, especially if we're in the same community and we know the parents. If we're on the same team and one of us, and we know the parent and then not, it gets tricky, you know? If we're being real, real mom on like, what is the next step to do?
There, there are, there are resources that teach us as coaches or being on a team where it teaches you how to be a mandated reporter and how you actually go about those steps. So there are resources that are there and available for, I think, anybody to actually go into that shows you the steps.
Raise your hand if you know what a mandated reporter is. Okay, good, yes, go ahead.
Um, I think, you know, yeah, Kathy's right, you know, it is a sticky situation, but I think what we're lacking as a community is the communication. We don't communicate no more to each other. We're all parents, you know what I mean? So instead of hollering at one social worker and then boom, you receive as involved, we miss that opportunity to help out that sister, you know?
That's why I said I would rather confront the person because if my child would tell Derica something about me, I would want her to come and ask me.
Right, like, I never miss that.
What going on at home?
Right, and maybe that parent is reaching out for help too and she don't know how to ask for help, you know? And then we hit the community that, you know, that helps us recovering drug addicts, abusive, you know what I mean, us in and out of prison, we have, we, we, we follow them where to live, you know what I mean? And there are plenty of them out there suffering, they don't know the way out. So I think before dropping the gun and going into that, holler at the mom or the dad. And if we cannot find the mom or the dad, we just love up the baby until we, until they come to the practice.
Well, and I think to your point, like, hurt people hurt others, so if somebody is hurting the child, I mean, that parent is probably hurting too for whatever reason. Maybe something we don't know, maybe it's financial issues, maybe it's parental sibling issues, we don't know those things. So I think a full story, getting the full story is good before jumping to conclusions. Having grace in the situations that you just can't understand because it's really hard to understand everyone's, you know, situations inside their home. But then how do we, and I'm gonna go do one more and then we'll do a new, a new problem. How do we have, so say for example this DV situation and you guys are all giving great answers. The kid says something at school, they say something to a coach, the coach goes and talks to the parents, they have a whole pot of pollen, they say, hey, hey, let's, let's do better, let's be better, hey, let's be kind, let's do all these things. How do we know if that is going to be a good long-term solution? And how do we continue to support so that this doesn't get pushed under rug and then spiral into a gun getting loaded, getting shot, yeah? So how do we know after we checked in, we touched base, we talked to the family, we loved on everybody, what do we do to try to create something that we think will have a more long-term effect?
So one, it's going to take time because it's generation by generation by generation. And I'm gonna tell you, every suggestion I have is gonna scare the hell out of everybody. You have to educate the parents. And the fact of the matter is, they may not get arrested, so they're not gonna go to mandatory therapy, okay? Counseling for domestic violence helps, it really does help the adults. I do believe you need a universal curriculum in the school that all students are going to get at least once in their lifetime, through high school in particular. Because you need to educate them about emotional intelligence, you need to educate them about violence, you need to educate them that they have choices to make so they don't follow the path and the program that they were given by their normal household.
Okay, we'll pause right there, let's pause. Because I want us to get to actual things and I'm not an administrator. So like, I, is anyone here work for one of the schools? You do, okay, I want you to take what he said and you tell me what kind of curriculums do you guys offer and what he's talking about, what do we?
Elementary, we don't.
Okay.
Um, if there's a situation that comes up where it's suspect, especially if the child reports some type of issue like that, specifically domestic violence, are, we are not to investigate, the admin wants us to hand it over to them and they handle it.
So he was just suggesting, not investigation, but he's suggesting education. So he's talking about, what'd you say, emotional, uh?
Emotional intelligence.
Emotional intelligence, what do we have in elementary school for that?
It depends on the school. Um, our school, each grade level has some type of social emotional learning that they do in their classrooms, but that's, that's pretty much it.
And you're elementary?
Elementary.
Okay, anybody else who's an educator here or teaches at one of the schools or is a counselor? Yes, go ahead.
I'm a part of a teacher.
Go ahead, go ahead counselor, yeah.
No, I agree with that gentleman right there, that it does start with our children and if not, it's gonna be a cycle that continues and continues. So character building, education in elementary, heavy elementary, middle school and high school. Middle school, um, my son went to mine at intermediate and we had the best experience of our, like, I just love all the teachers, the admin, it's a great school. He went to Makaha, same thing, but it's that, that forcing character, how do we show aloha? And, um, high school, what that looks like is what we don't have anymore in schools. I asked a counselor that teaches here if they do rice babies anymore? Do they have home ec where they teach things like parenting and child development, child psychology, emotional intelligence, nothing like that. And what's happening is our children are graduating from high school either without no vision, no goal, or very limited goals and they're having children and they don't know how to be a parent. So if we could give up more parent education, um, how to be parents in high school as part of home economics or call it something else because I don't know if there's souls anymore in classrooms or what to be able to cook, but I had a rice baby in high school. I spent a whole unit walking around decorating my rice bag. I got to name it, it was my baby, I had to, in high school. I spent a whole unit walking around decorating my rice bag. I got to name it, it was my baby, I had to write about how to be a parent. I got learned behavior management, what positive behavior. Name it, it was my baby, I had to write about how to be a parent. I got learned behavior management, what positive behavior is and just how the dialogue of what a parent is. I got learned behavior management, what positive behavior is and just how the dialogue of what a parent.
There's a drop off, start early, start early, okay, Uncle Paul.
How many here, I think everybody gonna raise their hand, I gonna raise mine. How many of you here think you were victims of domestic violence when you was growing up? When you was growing up as a child or as an adult in your family? Okay, I'm seventy-six years of age and my mom and dad domestic violence. Guess who called the cops?
They called the cops.
We called the cops who come over, arrest father. Where's my father? Okay, no, but back then, you could let them go, they have four hours window period, freedom period. Now, now, sorry, you gotta go jail. See, so here we are, we're a generational group of people here now, okay? And our kids are the other generations, what he was just saying, generational. Because what we know now, we wanna fix, simple word, fix. And that's where she's coming from, we wanna fix it. And he said it right, it's gonna take time because look at how many people we have here that are adults. I'm seventy-six, anybody else here eighty? No, eighty, sixty, you just keep going down the line. We all saw it, we all were either victims of it, well, we saw it. And now we're trying to fix it, and that's what she's doing now.
Okay, let me, let me ask two follow-up questions to you. First follow-up question, are we saying that we're transitioning out of the lickings era and like that's what the problem is, I'm being serious.
Yeah.
Are we transitioning out of lickings is okay and now it's not okay and now we're all lost because we can't lick kids or what is it? I'm being serious.
Yeah, it's still happening.
We're transitioning out of lickings, right? Because now lickings equals jail.
But only some families, ma'am, only some families are transitioning.
So he, he says only some families are transitioning out of lickings, yeah? So maybe not every family is transitioning out of lickings.
Yeah.
So that's my first question, is we're having a different disciplinary style because of the way laws are going, let, let me parse this out so we can try to see if we can talk about it.
Yeah.
If you are a family that's transitioning out of lickings, because I feel like we went through that, you know, when you're like, okay, we better not, we better stop doing this because now the children are all scared of us, um, how do you do it when that's the way you were raised? Like, how do you physically or like mentally? Yes, I wanna hear.
You gotta get your own counseling first.
Thank you!
You're, like, you're, like, the whole issue is, you brought it up, fam, you brought up your own example, like, you don't talk to your parents. What are you doing about, and I'm not, I mean, to put you on the spot.
No, I, I go to counseling, I go to counseling, like, every other week, guys. Like, I, I need heavy counseling to talk about my mother, I need heavily counseling to talk about my marriage, I do it all the time.
I think that's where it starts, like, we, we need help, we need counseling to, I got my butt beat growing up and I'm a great person now, yep, but I've not laid one hand on my daughter because, but I've replaced that because I don't want her to go through that, what I would.
Raise your hand if you, I, I, I don't wanna make everyone disappointed, but raise your hand if at one point in time you've ever went to therapy or counseling, at one point in time, okay? So I wanna say all those are kinda taking steps towards that, Miss Hannah, what?
Well, I just wanna note that domestic violence, there's, um, some influencers, like drugs and alcohol. You know, which is, um, I know my dad, when he came home drunk, everybody was on our toes.
They're contributing factors.
Because we knew we were either getting wasted up in the middle of the night, stuff was gonna be like, not, not happening, yeah. So that could be a, like, that's one of the major influences.
And mental health issues are contributing factors. So are economic.
Okay, I feel like I'm, I'm almost done with the DV, I just wanna, I just wanna, one more point that Uncle Paul brought up, just one more. So we're transitioning out of the licking space, but Uncle Paul also brought up, like, how, how do we then try to get ourselves into this mindset of what we do with our kids? Coolay is saying, oh, we gotta like, you know, teach this in school. Where do each of you go, and I'm saying this very honestly, where do each of you go to get ongoing parental guidance? Because all of us still have kids that are growing up, we could all still learn how to be better parents still today. Where do you go to get ongoing parental support? Family members?
Grandparents.
Grandparents?
Church.
Bible.
Church, Bible.
I, I follow parents, you hit your tip on Instagram.
She says she follows parent behavior tips on Instagram, yeah.
I, I'm grandma, right? So our, my upbringing is totally different from what's happening. So to tell my son and my daughter-in-law that, you know, your, your baby needs to, they don't wanna hear it. They don't want my, um, input. And they're telling me like, mom, that was your day, that, that's the one. But I see it coming, I, I, I know what I'm looking at and I just have to back off. So I go to like charity, you know, like California, Kupuna on the outside.
You go to a class, Miss Hannah, do you go to a class?
Yeah.
What class do you go to?
I go with a bunch of us grandmas, we kinda hang out and kinda.
Where you guys hang out at?
Because we don't know what we can do with ourselves. Because we're trying to give them what we've learned and.
They don't want it.
Parents say they don't want me to.
Not all parents.
What we can do with ourselves, because we're trying to give them what we've learned and.
They don't want it.
Parents say they don't want me to.
Not all parents.
Stop telling my kid that.
Okay, let, let me go right there.
I, I admire what Nita said and I, I'm glad that my parents are influential in the way I raise my kids. The way I was raised was physical discipline, wasn't abuse. Could be more than that, not than that. Because there is a right, right way to physically discipline your kids.
Yes.
And if you educate yourself, there is a, there are right, right way and a wrong way. And I like to believe I'm doing it the right way. I'm glad that my parents are very influential in the way I raise my kids because I, I heard now, just shy of them. Like, what she said, I, I hope and I pray that more, more parents my age, younger, you know, right around our age group take what their parents are trying to teach them so we can break the cycle.
Yes. Uh, picking back off of breaking the cycle, that's the motivation for me, uh, to my children, right? Is molestation happened to me, right? Mom left, off to prison, dad gone, dah 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 dah. So today I would give my children what I always wanted, you know what I mean? What I never had and the communication, yeah, I'm not gonna lick my kids today, but once in a while, trust and believe, you're actually there. Keep saying real quick, you know what I mean? But, like, we break the cycles and I truly believe that, you know? And the communicating, you know what I mean? Love, you understand why, you, you know, you understand why we're talking about this right now? Yes, mom? And to go back to the educational area, ever since the shooting, my daughter's a junior in this school, yeah? Um, she's been coming home and she's been sharing that they've been talking about some, some things in classes.
Such as?
Such as the kids are open to the trauma happening in their home, you know? So I, I feel very good and I'm alive. I, I would get that young boy that got shot in his chest out of there, you know what I mean? But we're gonna save that for the next area, but I don't even let my kids walk home no more, you know what I mean? I drive, I pick up my babies, but it's the communication. I don't say I'm a greatest parent, trust and believe, come home, you know what I mean? But communicating with our kids and hearing what they're doing here, I'm, I'm really happy.
So are you saying that at school, the opening up was something you thought you were taught?
Yeah. Yeah, amongst the kids, yeah.
Go ahead, I wanna go right here to mom.
Is there a way we can tie the gun violence that's happening into this?
Yes.
Because this could be a factor in some of the kids' lives, why they out there riding in the street, right? Because we, I know, I came here, I'm pretty sure majority of the people came here for the gun violence.
Yeah.
So maybe we can try again on that topic because time is crunching a little bit.
Sure, sure. Uh, let me take two more and then we're gonna go this direction, yes, Hannah?
I'm also concerned now the kids that aren't in school.
Aren't in school?
Aren't in school.
Truist.
Have not to lose them because then one death, one in school.
Truist.
Have not to lose them because then one death, one step.
I, I would say, I mean, I run a truancy council in this district, but I would say that that's my concern is that a lot of the messaging goes to kids that, uh, attend, kids that are obedient, kids that have good grades, which I think is great. But if we're talking about the peripheral kids, the kids that are not always in, in school, not always here, how, how are we talking about all of this in curriculum when those kids would probably never be in a classroom to hear that? I'm just saying, because the truancy, so the truancy program I run, we run it for the elementary, but it's literally kids that have missed almost half a year of school, that are in fifth grade that still can't read, that have a great, great, great grandmother raising them, that they have a disability, that their mom's on drugs, the great, great grandmother has no electricity in the house. It's heavy. The kids who come to my truancy court, they're like, we are out of options. We would rather survive than take our kids to school because we can't even barely have food for the next day.
Are the kids feeling, they have, they have enough to offer at home?
Yeah, so to your point, to your point, and to all of us, right? We're talking about different sections and segments of kids. Kids that are very good, that are probably all of you guys' kids, that go play sports and they go to the movies and the loogits or whatever they do. Then we have the middle, middle range, maybe they go school but maybe no extra sports and they go to the movies and the loogits or whatever they do. Then we have the middle, middle range, maybe they go school but maybe no extracurricular, maybe no influence of parents, parents in their house. And then we have the other one, just they take care of themselves, they're lucky if they get a meal. Sometimes they go to school if somebody takes them or forces them, otherwise they're on their own. So like, in these different segments of kids, to your point about the gun violence, my question is, let's talk about the right segment of kids. Because in order for us to get real specific and solve this problem, we need to get to the specific population, right? So if we're talking about specific populations, which I know you guys know what kids I'm talking about, this is, this is pretty important that we figure out this population that's being addressed because this small little population that's running around the guns, they affecting all of us.
Yeah.
And, and we all over here, and this is the thing that made me mad, I'll come to you in one second. This is the thing that made me mad when I sat through all these discussions this past weekend. People saying stuff like, yeah, people in white that need to get their kids. I was like, what? No, no, someone said that I need, I was like, sorry, what are you talking about? I know where my kids are, everyone on the street knows where our kids are, who are you talking about? The majority of the people in our community know where their kids are and we're taking care of them. There are kids that run rampant, but that's not everybody. And that's not, that's not to say we don't know how to parent, there are people who do. So like, I think we gotta really segment this out in our heads and talk about how do we affect a peripheral group of people that are never gonna be in this room? They're not showing up for these meetings and they're not showing up for counseling and they're not showing up for church. Yeah, these are not the people that are gonna be hearing these very positive and productive conversations. Where do we go for that, go ahead.
So I know you wanna wrap this up, so I'd like to put a bow on it for you. I've been in mental health, my name's Dwayne, I've been in mental health for thirty-five years and I've been a domestic violence treatment provider or therapist for the last twenty. I'm now also getting to work with the active duty members. The thing about physical discipline, which while I understand can have its place and value, I can almost tell you that every single male that I ever had come through my counseling had plenty of physical violence as didn't know or learn anything else. A healthy relationship was a Disney movie to them. They didn't realize that they can create it because you have to teach them what they need to know because of what was missing, and I'll leave it at that.
Let's, let's go on this, so something you said kinda struck me because in the back we said this phrase, there's a right way to physically discipline, then you said the phrase, physical violence was accepted in their home at whatever level it was accepted. I would argue that physical violence, if you're not getting what you want or you need to get to the extreme, goes to something like this.
Absolutely.
Right? Because it, it'll start off with, okay, fine, I'll punk you, okay, fine, I'll hurt you, okay, fine, I'll steal your stuff and then maybe it's not enough because the physical violence doesn't satisfy what you're.
So there will be a small percentage of people that go so extreme. They'll even go so extreme as to be school shooters and I went to Columbine High School. So some of them will go to such an extreme that they will lash out at that level. Most of them won't turn to the gun, but they will stay violent in their families. They will be violent at their work sites. Bullying is an offshoot and a problem that comes from family violence to begin with.
Okay, let's talk about this, because he's saying that the violence that the kids are using is violence that they learned, they saw, or that they accepted, okay? So that's kind of how it started, but, but let's adjust this. If these are peripheral families, peripheral kids, what then is our option if all of these nice things we're talking about will never touch them?
You have to find a way to get them those services.
She says crew unit. Yeah, in the back, over here.
We have to find a solution on how to help people that don't wanna help themselves.
That's right.
How to help people?
Yeah, that's right, and sometimes it has to be forced.
We do have a lot of people in the community that does help themselves and they do take services, but there is also a lot that don't.
Sometimes, yeah, you gotta force feed them, like me, I'm gonna speak out of experience. Had I not gone to prison, had my house never get raided, had I not lose my kids, you know, I had to get to an area of surrender, but, and just, you know, in town, Kalini, it says Jesus coming soon. That would help me, as lost as I was. You know, so I know you mentioned earlier, you was doing the walk earlier and you said, let's change the atmosphere, maybe one day you'll get pressure washed down.
Let's go!
Let's go, I live over there.
That's what I'm talking about, no, this is what I told the state, I was like, this, this looks like shit over here.
We need security, turn on the lights.
No, like, we should change.
Change the color.
Change the look, the color, clean up, with so much cockroaches, the whole field.
But like, calling doesn't tell the public, you cure cockroaches.
That's great, we get landscapers, not even sleeping.
They're not even sleeping, help us, Erica.
Love, but you're right, love, we need structure.
Okay, okay, guys, guys, let's go on this, let's go on this. And this is why I always choose location as the crime triangle for me. Because I oftentimes get overwhelmed with the offender and the victim because it deals with services, it deals with education, it deals with a very long-term solution and frankly, I'm not over. I'm not in charge of education, I'm not a principal, so I can't affect it. I always can affect location, I do it everywhere, everywhere I go on all the projects that I do. Let's talk about location. Why is Uluvehi a hotspot? I'm being serious.
Because the harbor's very terrible.
Yes.
I just, um, running off of Derica, I've been living over these twenty-one years and the pavilion that we have over there, the rock school pavilion, there was, the walls back in the day. Hardies, like, you could leave your kid, I could play on the street, you know, and it's not, and I'm not there and I've heard this stuff in a lot of the other shit. But the community over there, well, I shouldn't even say the community, the people that care on the landscaping, the painting, the housing, like, everything, they don't do their job. They do the bare minimum.
Okay, okay, so, so she's saying Uluvehi is attracting the negative intent, uh, energy because.
And not only that, the people from the hard wall just. And not only that, but people from the hard wall just for me, I see them walk back and forth.
Oh, no, it's, it's easily a thoroughfare, right? I see people go back and forth all day.
Yeah, so even with that too, and like even mine, there is a commandment preschool in that, in that neighborhood. You know, program ranked by, uh, could like.
Wait, wait, are you bringing up a commandment preschool for what reason?
Oh, no, I'm just thinking, it's school, they're shooting for kids.
No, I was like, what do you think they should help us?
All children that are married that come.
Oh, no, like seriously, there, there is so much schools, like you would be, it's shocking to me how it always happens there. Okay, uh, she says that Uluvehi's is not clean and it's whatever, whatever. Okay, somebody else tell me why Uluvehi's is a hotspot. Because I'm not even kidding, it's right there at the harbor and there, it's like back and forth, back and forth. So what is it?
Tito.
Yes, yes.
I live in Uluvehi's, um, my mom and my dad is James Pecalle and I'm Shuriya.
Oh, your James father?
Yes, hi. Uh, ever since I moved to Uluvehi's, it's been pretty neat. Um, to the point where I used to let my kids go outside, even with their cars, play, even being children outside, not on technology. And I'm scared for my life, because I feel like somebody's gonna come and scare my kid, they're gonna be in the wrong places. And I feel like there's a lot of drugs that happen in that.
Cause I haven't hearing about why Mama and Sunflower anymore, I'm hearing.
No, it's true, it's true, it's back.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that two homes that was built that night, two big.
Oh, the one by White Mama?
The one by White Mama? That kinda changed everybody's look and now they're all this way.
Changes up the community and makes it look a little bit more, if they were what it used to. Standing on what it sees, what it's not.
Wait, say that again, what?
There's a house over there that has guns, and that's why I don't want my kids to come.
So the shooting that happened, in the, my parents live one house out. Now it's dropping out to my baby, to my guy, to all that happened.
Well, can I ask a real question here? When that thing happened, what I was told is that nobody gave intel, nobody shared any information, is that true?
No, cause I was. I told them, I seen the boy leaning down by the truck and I had to call my best friend and ask her, she had nephews over her house, she told me no, and I was like, oh. You know, the whole story with, I was trying to give them two details, but.
Yeah, don't need to.
Um, after that, just, just noticing a whole bunch of boys in front of that house, front house, marketing offices, two houses down from their parents. It was skeptical, cause not too many people were there and like that. The neighborhood, people are living, they come out once in a while, cause they don't smoke cigarettes outside, but.
So you're saying unidentified people who aren't there, who live there, have been entered?
Yeah.
Sounds like a crack house.
So, so the round ball, all of the house shootings where my parents did, that's a round ball. He arrived now, come around ball, drive down the round ball.
Never had shared some police back in the day a while. Now when I go visit my parents, I got a passenger chair.
Oh, yeah, there's one, at our, at our street.
Sure.
There's, you know, sir, you're in it, and there's always.
And, wait, hold on, does that make you feel good or bad?
Honestly, I really, just having the presence there is not, it's not, because if you sit at my house, I have a clear. And you'll see a lot of traffic coming in and out of our beach.
Andrea, they said everybody's back at the, um, cafeteria rocking it up already.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. She said it's getting creepy out there, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's creepy? Oh, was she just staying here? No, 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 see, I think. Oh, no, because I think they're on a time bomb, I told them we're supposed to wrap up at seven thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard, I heard seven thirty.
Can you tell us that the wrap-up time is seven thirty?
Yeah, we still have time.
Because we're supposed to end at?
Yes, mom.
Yeah. And I started all of this early so that we could have more time, so I started the meeting early at five forty-five.
So, that night with the young boy, we were just finishing a women's class at my house. So we wanna talk about therapeutic, counseling, all of that, underground women. We in action at my place and we all come out and we get shot. Anyway, long story short, these kids not scrap no more. So that was the story, the kids came over there to the blue houses for fighting.
Yeah.
And then they ended up fully gone. But see, this baby outside the lane, he not speak English. Here's the other thing too. All these, uh, people coming in, 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 and, and living in our community, that, that not speak English.
Are you talking about that they're Mexican?
No, this boy is from Mexico.
Oh, he speak English, it's just, he came from Mexico, I know who that is.
Really?
Yeah, his family came from Mexico. Um, they was, he actually came down here to get away from that shit in Mexico. And to know that he got pulled into it is really mind-boggling, because this boy really was trying to go on the right path. My boy went LC with him over here in Y-Nine. And to know that he was involved with all of this, it's like, holy shit. All these kids, I know all these boys that was involved in all these shootings, from the ones dead to the ones in jail. That's why I came here, I came here not to talk about domestic violence, no offense. I came here for the gun violence, because that's what's happening in our community with our youth. They're killing off each other. What, what do we do? I've come to all these meetings, I came to the first meeting with Miguel Bouda. That's when something should have happened, there was nine lives taken out of the back. So what, what are we gonna do after this? What is, you know, like solutions, we, we always do that in meetings. What is actually gonna get done? Our people are dying out here, we're, we're crying for help. And it's not just people, it's the youth. These are the key of our future. These are leaders that's gonna lead Y-Nine into something bigger, I believe that. But how do we get them there, how do we change their mindset when their mindset is there? What do we do?
You know what I like? I like that we're actually talking about a physical location, Uluvehi's, and we're talking about specific kids. Because my thing is like, I don't wanna keep talking in the hypothetical. Well hypothetically, there's, uh, sad people in Y-Nine, that's too broad, I can't do anything about that. I don't know where these people live, give me their address and then we can solve the problem. So let's talk about this, I wanna talk about exactly what she's talking about. If there's a group of boys, which you're saying, maybe they know each other, you know them, some of them are caught up in the wrong thing. And do these boys actively go to school?
They're, that's crazy, that's the thing, they all know each other. So it's like, they all grew up with each other, through football, to school. We all know each other, like going back to how we all know each other in the community. We know parents. You know these boys was after my boys for two years, I had to tuck my boys away. Because I was scared that they was gonna get shot. I was so scared, I had to hide my sons, and they're teenagers. No, that's not cool, and I'm pretty sure I'm not the only parent that's tucking their kids away. They're teenagers, they should be living an open teenager life. They should be coming to school, enjoying, enjoying these. These, this is the best time of their life.
Right.
My sons have no fucking memories, because we couldn't make none out here in Y-Nine. We couldn't, and that's sad. Now when he goes back and thinks, he's gonna think like, who? My whole, my whole teenage life, I was hiding in the house. It was only football school, home, football school, home. And that's scary. It's scary to know that these boys are just killing each other. And they all know each other. I went to these parents when they were after my son, wasn't anything done? No, they still took lives after that. So it's like, what do we do? I know, laws need to be enforced, laws need to be changed. The community needs to change, the community needs to stop turning a blind eye and say something. That's the problem, we all get fault in this, because everybody knew what was going on, but nobody said nothing. Nobody said nothing, we knew it wasn't you. We know the parents who did these, you know what I mean, the kids. But nobody did nothing. Everybody, why, I don't know, scared.
I'm gonna come back to you, I, I like, I like where you're going, I have questions, just go to you.
So by experience, in Kaliki, there is a crime reduction unit that goes around and sees all the crimes that's happening and try with the community to see if they can fix it. But it's the community that gotta help the police and the sheriffs and everybody else in order for this to work. I helped them, I volunteered with them, and I know it works. If the community can come together and do it, then you gotta, you got a solution.
Okay, let me, let me, it's a personal that I'll go to you to right here. Do you guys believe the community is not helping, that it gets help?
I think afraid of retaliation, yes, that's what it is.
Yeah, but we did, we did some movements, like with me and Auntie, we did Tambo Land Jam after my niece, Anna, Richie Anna got shot. You know what I mean? There was, there was something, we tell enforcement of, of what we know, they shut them down, they get, they, they lawyer up. We do speak up, there's some of us that do speak up. But it gets shut down, like Luke Brown, he was fishing in Tambo Land.
Yeah, I know.
You, you, you know what I mean, we do speak up. So I'm down with that, trust me, me and Auntie, I'm down, I don't give a shit. I'm down. Andrea, get us some bulletproof vests, they want to smoke that.
Don't say me.
We is out, no, but see, and that's the thing, we gotta be out when it's time. It's not the kind of cute little poo-poo hours with your badge. You know what I mean? Just flash them and they effort, but we gotta come out hot.
Is this group a gang?
Yeah.
Cause this, cause this is a difference, I'm, so I'm originally from LA. I grew up in the early nineties, the Eighteenth Street Mafia, Mexican Mafia, gang war and everything, until they called the Truce. Not to get into that kind of history, right? But I'm here because I grew up around gang culture. And I'm, I'm concerned if it is a gang, it, we, I'm sorry to say, it's above our pay grade right now. Gangs is a totally different thing, but if it's becoming a gang, the community could definitely step in. So there's a difference, so I think, I think more than anything else we need to address, if it is a gang, we need, we need crack, I hate to say crash units from LAPD, but a crash unit like, like from LAPD. Or the sheriff's office that they had in the, in the eighties and nineties.
It sounds like they're developing a gang mentality.
Question, is it a gang?
It's trying to be.
Yeah, so we get chance for shutting down, they, they fresh. It's two hundred and BB eight.
If, if, yeah, if it's before a gang, we could, the community, absolutely.
Okay, okay, that's what it needs to know, yes.
So, yes, we're talking about gangs, they wanna, me and Ms. Anna, we've, we've been out of school forty years. When we was growing up, sadly, everybody knew of Y-Nine, but Y-Nine had all of this happening, because Uncle Charlie would keep things on the rap, Uncle, Uncle Goose can talk about that. You know, so, but nobody even bring that up about here in Y-Nine, I mean, it's a community, right? We get together, but you, you have these families that was bad business for everybody, if you have all these rapid shootings, so. The, the underlying was all these young guys, they, they no more respect, they no more respect for, for those that came before. So what I'm saying is that, nobody even addressed that, so there's, there's this element, you know, Tito. And just, just gotta, gotta get back to that, because like I said, when we was growing up, it wasn't like that, and everybody knew Y-Nine, but Uncle Charlie, Uncle Rocky and them, they all kept this place on, on lockdown, nobody was doing stupid.
Well, we'll come back to that, what do you wanna say, go ahead.
Just, maybe people don't like saying nothing, cause they are afraid of retaliation. I, I don't even live in this community anymore, I'm embarrassed to say I from Y-Nine. I represent a, a beach now. I mean, I'm here tonight to just listen to what, what as a community would do, or what the solution is for the children that is up in comedy. But like, how, it, like you guys were saying earlier, how can we reach the kids who got it all? How can we reach the parents who are living in this drug thing? You know, just what we gonna do, shut down game room, shut down places? I don't know, I, I say so flabbergasted right now. But it just in general, the, the purpose is mostly to be, I feel, it's the kids to not get the domestic violence. Get need the mental health assistance. But then I see like, we're only just saying Uluvehi, it's like, Uluvehi is just the main housing for the locals?
Well, it's just been a hotspot of where it's repetitively happened. So what a lot of cops are asking me, and I'm not saying being cops, I'm talking about all the way up to the chief, is asking me if it's turf wars, asking me if it's geographically located, asking me if there's somebody within Uluvehi that's actually running it and that's why they keep coming back to it. Because some of those boys don't live there anymore, so why, why do they keep returning back to Uluvehi? Why is it a magnet for this? And then the Bold Harbor seems to just be a overflow, so if it doesn't go down in Uluvehi, then it just overflows into the Bold Harbor. So I would say, I'm not, not trying to solve other issues in the community, I am. But I think when we're talking about a crime triangle, like in this specific case, because it's happened from last year, I would say the main places we've had shootings is our beach parks and Uluvehi and the harbor. I think those are all the hotspots. Our beach parks are not secure and there's lots of activity, uh, twenty-four seven on all of them. And so indefinitely, for me, beach parks is like, yeah, you could definitely do anything there and no one would even know. Dead bodies from hot times like that.
And, and a different type of solution? Sorry, a different type of solution, as you talk about change location? Maybe things like, you know, the midnight basketball league stuff, where you have people who are coming in to volunteer, sometimes it's churches, sometimes it's other people who are willing to come in and you have facilities where you can get the kids in to do things, you need to give them opportunities that replace what they're up to.
We could, I mean, I wanna still get back to these boys, I wanna get back to this very issue about this formation of the gangs. Because I think the formation of the gang is my main concern. Is if the gang doesn't exist, or if there's nobody that's really holding out Y-Nine, saying, don't do it, then it's gonna form soon. Or, or it's for me.
It's for me.
It's for me.
Because people are asking me why it's repetitive, I'm like, because I think it's for me. So if, if the gang is forming, my main issue is that, yes, resources, yes, curriculum, yes, schools, but we have actually an urgent issue on our hands.
Yeah.
What about putting undercover cops in the high school or in the Uluvehi or something?
So there are many plainclothes officers in our community right now, many, there's many. To your point about the crew unit, I am meeting with them on Monday and Tuesday to kind of check their intel, because I don't know if they're getting all the intel they need. Like I need to talk to you.
Not always.
No, they're not, and my main thing with the chief, when I talked to him yesterday, was they're trying to overlap so many officers out here, but where's the continuity? Where's the one person that's spearheading all of this, that's gonna share all the information? I don't need a new officer every two days inside here, that's just like, oh, what we doing, what we doing, like, I don't need that. I need like a constant flow of us getting to the endpoint, you know what I mean? So that's why, yes, I think presence is okay, but I would rather have crimes solved and addressed than just have people like chilling with the light on, because I don't know if that's gonna get us anywhere. Well, they were, they were instructed to just be here. So to your point, they weren't instructed to pay attention, they just said, turn on your light, get in the community. I'm not saying they wouldn't address it, they would, they would, yeah. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not anti HPD any day, I'm always gonna be supporting them. But to your point about these boys, them knowing each other, them being related to a gang forming, to Uluvehi's need to be revamped completely, colors, luaals, whatever we need to do to kind of revitalize that area. Maybe we put CCTV cameras in the harbor, we change the lighting in the harbor, like, I'm talking about everything. Because you know that Uluvehi's and the harbor are both owned by the state, I'm not saying we can't help on the city side, but I'm saying I'm gonna ask the governor to unload everything for me.
Yeah.
No, let's line it up. So when we had the meeting, and I, I, I wish I could record all my meetings and just share it all with you guys. So you can see all of what everyone's saying, but no, in the meetings, they was like, like this. Yeah, and I was like, this, they're like, this, I was like, no, this, like, I'm talking about the Bold Harbor and Uluvehi. And the other thing that I'm doing too is, and I know there's, you know, Coco and others, but I'm talking actively with James Pecalle and with Marcus about transitioning everyone out of the Bold Harbor this year. Everybody. Because right now, because there's that kind of like ambiguity, right? So you could do something and then run through the harbor and hide with the cat, meaning whatever, right? I think because it's kind of like half-half, and that's why our beach parks, they have a lot of shootings, it's kind of half-half. Kind of public, kind of people's houses, kind of, right, yeah? So you can kind of do whatever there. So I think in my mind, that location itself would need to be addressed, and maybe it's gonna, um, be this place. Maybe shootings are gonna change certain routes. But at least at the very least, people in Uluvehi would have some kind of reprieve, because it's been ongoing for that particular public. Do you have a question? No?
Yeah. In all of your meetings, community meetings, has anything ever been brought up about bringing back a curfew? Anything like that? When we were growing up, the lights come on, we all know we had to be.
It's to get arrested after ten o'clock.
So we brought up the, we brought up the curfew idea, then Thursday makes meeting and Friday with the governor and the mayor. But in that meeting, because we're short everywhere, so if I have twelve officers that I'm working with, I gotta figure out the best use of those officers. Which if I have officers enforcing curfew, but then a murder happens, or officers enforcing curfew, and then a domestic violence issue happens, like, I'm basically pulling them into, you know, low-level crimes that yes, they need to be addressed, but if I don't have enough bodies, I have to prioritize, like where I would want them to go.
But if we had the research, would we say that it was part of the population?
But where would you enforce curfew, everywhere in Y-Nine?
Or just communicate that?
Fines for parents or guardians, we definitely penalize very poor people. And I'm not about penalizing people who already don't have any money.
But curfew, like, a lot of the gun violence is the youth, so. If they are past curfew, doesn't that be HPD possible calls to search them? And then if you search them, there could be a possibility to find a.
Well, well, let's talk about this, let's talk about this. Well, well, let's talk about this, let's talk about that. I would be in favor of enforcing curfew in the realm that you need to charge or you need to search somebody. Because then you should use that law to your favor to make sure that that person doesn't have a weapon, I would be in favor of that. I don't think having curfew across Y nine with all the cops doing it is a good use of resources. But I do think that if they were to confront a group of kids.
Oh, yeah, not to like just go out there and look for kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, if they come across the kid, you know what I mean, oh, yep.
How was that kid searched at ten o'clock at night, though? You gotta be careful. Again, the, the gang mentality, I'm walking from my uncle's house back to my house at ten o'clock, I got searched plenty, just because I was after, it was ten oh five. So, we have to be careful if we're trying to start delving into that probable cause area. I wasn't wearing gang colors either, I'm, I'm straight.
I, I wanna dig into what you're saying, I, I agree with you, so this is, this is part of the issue, right? It's like, our conversations go from shootings, teenagers, Uluvehi, the harbor, and then all of a sudden, we're talking about curfew, we're talking about ghost guns. So, I'm not saying we can't talk about those things, but I'm trying to say, if we're really trying to address these kids that are running rampant, that I'm guessing will come out again. I'm guessing everybody's laying low, because they know there's cops everywhere. And then what happens, in three weeks, when they go away, then what, they come out. So, when I, when the mayor came, so he surprised me, and he came on Monday to Y nine, he had me drive him around. He wanted to look, I was like, what are you looking for, middle of the day? And on top of it, everyone knows you guys are here, like, no one's coming out right now. My concern is, after this goes away, then what happens? Yeah, yes.
For my, my, my twenty-one-year-old son, when the shooting was happening up at our, our valley, and then the next night was the fifteen and the nineteen, um, there was, there was tough stuff, the kids was rolling up in cars, so, my son being twenty-one, he's like, why don't, just take and just raise the, raise the, um, the drivers from fifteen back to twenty-one to get their license, and then, you know, and then the cops, I mean, they can, they can see and look if their kid is, he looks younger than twenty-one, give, give the cops an opportunity to move. That was just some mindset for my twenty-one.
So, I will tell you guys that the whole traffic division is in our district right now. So, Major Sanaka's over traffic, and that's actually the guys that are out the most right now, I'm not saying the crew guys aren't here, the crew guys are here, a lot of them are in plainclothes. But I think for the traffic division, they're actually doing a lot of that, they're doing the citations and important. My thing is that I don't know if any of that is gonna actually address what you're talking about. Because my issue is this, yeah, so let's go back to what she brought up. If these are five, six, I mean, how many boys, ten, twenty? Seven or eight of them, and what are their ages?
Fifteen to nineteen.
And where, and are their parents involved?
Gotta be, so, like, I don't know, I think some of the parents do know what they're doing, believe return of Y nine, they know, like, believe what their kid is doing.
So, they just, maybe it's just the boys by themselves?
Yeah, majority of them, yeah, and then there's all these other ones that wanna be, like, you know, some of them. It, it also happens in school, like, a lot of the threatening and, you know, beach happens in, right here at this school, so, it's, it's like, there needs a solution everywhere.
And I would say you don't wanna put the kids into the system where they learn to be more angry and better criminals. It's about giving them other opportunities, that's a better alternative as well. I mean, when you look at the alternative high school system, the whole ethos behind that is, give a kid who doesn't feel valued at home, an adult that shows them they're valued, and you can make all the difference in their world, so. That's why part of it comes through the education system, but then the other thing is, if you have resources and if you have activities that are involving them, whether teaching them job skills, getting involved in recreation, some of it could be religion, it could be all kinds of things, Hawaiian culture, all kinds of things that you can give them as an alternative to what they're doing.
No, I agree, and I think what I'm talking about these boys, I'm not talking about arresting them, I'm talking about knowing them, I'm talking about understanding them. I'm talking about understanding their familial relationships, whether they're strained, non-strained, are they raising themselves? Are other family members raising them, are they getting abused at home, and then they come out at night? Like, I'm talking about understanding what's going on with these boys in complain. Because if what she's saying is true, what you're saying is true, which is, lots of other boys are starting to look up to them, lots of them are starting to say, hey, I wanna join that, that looks like something I wanna jump on, we're gonna be in for something really bad out here.
I know for us, Andrea, um, me and a group of women, we found a hot house where they were putting their guns together. We heard about it, we found out.
You found the hot house?
Yeah, so, we heard about it.
Gangs.
Yeah, we got the gang, and so we went there, and we like spoke, and we do like our own intel kind of thing.
I went walking, I went walking myself.
She walking herself, like, we need.
Stop story, cause I come from the street, so, and so, we, we tried to got it down, and boom, that house went垮, it just, they, everyone got kicked out, whatever happened, and now, we didn't know where.
Cause it got displaced, not so much.
They moved locations.
Wait, but did, did they move locations because you guys walked in, or did you call?
Uh, they couldn't have, no, no.
They just, we were on action line, and, and they got busted. But boy got arrested before action line came. Before they even hit him.
So, maybe it got addressed, maybe, yeah. Okay, guys, let's come up with some solutions, we're gonna wrap. I, I think that for me, to be honest, I feel super lucky that you guys are my team. Because I wanted to be with the group that was actually talking about the real shit that's happening out there. Like, I need to be, because all of these people talk to me all the time, the mayor, the governor, these guys are texting me all the time, asking me for intel, and I'm just saying, why do you need my intel if you don't have no plan? I will give you intel if you told me what the plan is. And I'm not saying I'm not giving intel, I'm just saying, like, I have had to lead this from the beginning till today, and, and probably for the next couple of weeks, I'm, I'm gonna have to lead this, because I think they're at a loss. I'm not saying that cops do not assault crime, they really do.
No, the community trusts you.
Yeah, that's why I came to your group.
Well, I'm just saying that I have to argue with people and yell at them every day, and it's not fun, because basically, I, I don't think that they're doing enough. Now, I'm not saying we don't do anything, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if I ask for CCTV cameras and I ask you to light up the harbor, then do it. If I ask to repaint Uluvehi's and we put this, then we do it. So, do you guys think that us revamping Uluvehi's and everything about it, and maybe having things within it, cause people is asking me to throw a concert? I, I, I want to say that it could be a good idea.
If you don't fix up, fix up the area around the affected area, then what's gonna happen when you do go to fix the affected area and not, not worry about the other area? They're all gonna disperse to the other area, right? So, the best thing to do is work on the outskirts of the affected area, and then continue with the affected area and find a solution, put them somewhere, like, uh, Y nine Valley, you know? There's a homeless shelter up there that can possibly be used as a, what is that called? Shelter home for apartments.
So, are you talking about moving guys out of the harbor, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they gotta go somewhere.
No, no, I, I can handle that, I'm gonna handle that.
What, what is it?
I honestly think that we should pinpoint this situation.
So do I, so do I. Like, I'm feeling this right here.
It has to be done.
This is why the social media, everything goes on social media, that's how they get everything.
No, I'm feeling like, this, this is it, this is it. Yeah, yeah, I'm feeling it.
They're killing off, they're killing, they're killing each other in this neighborhood, sad to see. The guy has to leave, our boys out of Y nine, because they're so fucking scared that they gonna die next. You know what I mean, I got Shetty, I'm pretty sure I'm not the only parent that felt that they have to get their kids out of the west side. I love this community, that's why I come to these things, that's why I get up and speak, cause, fuck, this is my kids' community, I'm not even from Y nine. I live out here for forty years, I've grown to love this place, because I re, I raised twelve kids out here, I get two grandkids. And it's like, I gotta pave the way, because this is, this is, they're fucking stop the problem, they born and raised out here. And to see it getting torn away, and, you know, it's like, just killing off each other, it's sad to see, it really is, so. I hoping and praying that this time around, there's gonna be change. I believe in you, I, I believe in you, girl, like, for real, I really, like, look into you full, like, you guys are our voice. That's why we put you guys here, you know what I mean, we look to you guys. Help us, help us help the kids.
My fellow local them, you know, is with the Y nine striking, we get Uncle Bruce there, who was surfing, you know, get us a, a car to get, we have plenty things that we can, um, input for.
Come together.
You know, yeah, for, for the youth, you know, and, and reclamation of Kanaka identity and the Polianna that comes behind that, and just getting them reconnected and their identities.
Yeah, no, I think the resources are good, I think I need to go get these boys.
What's the thing, huh, the boys don't want it.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, and I understand that it might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, but I think the outreach to them is what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Cause when we talked about this, literally, somebody from the governor's office was like, should we go stop by their house? I was like, you? You wanna go stop by there, should we, you know, wait this chick? I was like, go ahead, go ahead, knock on the door, see what happens. I was like, can we like make a real strategy here, go ahead.
We're talking about you to find Uluvehi, um, there's an artist out there, and I've seen his, how he does it. People in the community come out, and they put their handprint on whatever wall, whatever building. And it, it allows that community to have ownership of whatever it is that they're meeting. It makes you feel a part of that community, all of a sudden, neighbors are meeting neighbors, pretty nameless faces, you know, maybe you can get that. And then, when it comes to changing with the kids.
No, I'm so serious, let's do it.
Where, where these kids, where, where these kids, ah, I mean, where these kids, like, gathering? Maybe we can hit that, cause all it takes is one, two kids, change them, and then let them spread. Cause I grew up here, I was a follower, my, my, my classmates, my friends, they did the cool things, I wanted to do the cool thing to them. If we make the cool thing a good thing, let them spread that way.
That's what maybe need, like, you know how Waki Kiki get you, I bought this some to Sajre. You know, like, how Waki Kiki get you?
It's a, it's a house where these teens can go to, get resources, they shower, they eat, wash their clothes, all of that. We're not out, yeah, you get facilities in sober houses for adults, but what about the youth?
No, we do have one, sis, uh, Macau Valley, yeah, we do have one for the youth, uh, Macau Valley, a lady named Kathy runs it. Yes, um, and how I know this?
Then gotta get that out there, sis, because I never know about that till now. But that's what we need, we need facilities out here for our youth, some place, maybe in the old same place for all. Not everybody can afford, oh, it's expensive.
No, I would agree, I would agree, I, I love all the extracurricular suggestions, but I would agree that it's not available for families who don't have the funding to do it, or they don't have the right, or they don't have a parent who cares to go to fight practices, at least.
Yeah, there's some who said the state, it took money, when it came to our neighbors.
But, sis, 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 you know these kids individually, you, you know all these kids individually. And, and you're right, Andrea, I think it's just nipple right in the butt, the sheriff.
We gotta stop pretending like we gotta go get freaking FBI intel, and just go talk to these kids.
Just go straight to them, because.
Not the cops, like us, like me, I'll.
Right, right, the intel that I was talking to, one of the sheriffs that was at Uluvehi, he simply said that the boy that they have in custody is literally talking, and it's all connected with, with my niece, Richie Anna De Guzman, with Devon's one, it's all connected. It's all connected, all the boys.
You're in the streets, you gonna hear everything, and all the thoughts going next. That's the thing, people are games, like, you know, but we're not gonna say that.
Well, but I think to your point, though, like, I really feel like I have to get involved, because if it equals an arrest or jail time, we're not helping anybody, cause we need to rehab these children, we need to understand where they're from. Cause we might get the one kid, but what about everybody else inside that house that's not there, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, like, I hear that, oh, they're investigating, or the kid's talking, or they locked him up, but like, there's something bigger going on here, like, that's why I don't think that it's just gonna be, oh, did the detective talk to him, did he give somebody up, did he roll on somebody, like, you know what I mean, like, I, I, it's gotta be more. So, let's just, I know I keep saying we're gonna wrap, we're gonna wrap. Uh, I just wanna thank you guys for being here, I, I do think that the solutions that we're talking about, from murals to revitalizing Uluvehi's, to, I don't know, maybe we have a concert inside there. See, this is my thing, though, is like, I don't mind organizing a community concert, everyone thinks we need to bring more positivity to our community, I agree with that, I agree with that. But my concern is to put it in areas where the light needs to be shut, right? Cause I'm not gonna just charm inside, oh, we're gonna have a, no, tell me where the darkness is, so that I can shine the light there, so that we can put it in the affected area. So, I think that if you guys wanted it in Uluvehi's, which is kind of a small area, and just have the families that are there come to it, I mean, I, I am concerned if we have it at the Bold Harbor.
Why not all of them on the post?
A concert?
No, not just the concert, just like anything, anything, like the murals, the paintings, just coming together as a community, all of them on the post and making it art.
We could, I mean, that's definitely a long-term plan, I have a mural that's being painted, like, right at the entrance, not put it out on the bridge to nowhere. But I think for right now, stay in this affected area, the kids, the revitalization of Uluvehi's, and I think we all agree that probably tons of things need to change at the harbor, yeah? Yeah, so I'm talking about CCTV.
Where you have your murals, and you have your engagement, your community, club colleges, Nankubi, Nani Kono, Kawaiono, when you come in, you see that, we don't have the violence there, we don't have to have any of those locations, because there's an identity of self-care, and the kids are demonstrating that, when you drive by and you see all of the gardens that have been planted, they, they give a level of excitement.
The thing that it's more visual in those areas.
Well, it's very visual in there, but you get that community, like, you don't count that, like, do you have, see that one greater sense of connection to art, to music, to programs? Safe places are everywhere on our coastline, it's just tragic that the whole sinister activities are happening on the fringes of the whole safe places. And so, there are places that we can go across the whole coastline, from Nankubi to Macau. It's just, it's tragic that Hawaii is a safe place, but yet the, the park, and Macau Park is, is dangerous. Kaala Farms is an incredibly safe location, we have sinister activities on the fringes, right outside, yeah, all of, is a safe location, yet we have these, so. But Y nine Jim is an amazing safe place for kids to go box, to, to play basketball. But right on the fringes up there, how many illegal ghost guns are right outside of that, on the fringes? So, I mean.
If you look, like, when, if you go in here, we'll just go past McDonald's, and then you go to hit the canal, and then there's a homeless on the front of, oh. You look at a dead library, a public library, look barren, and then we get that, and then right there on the school, the harbor, Uluvehi that strip.
Insurance is happening right there, Andrea, so, transparency is a pretty big problem, so, you know, the library is a safe place. Kupunas go there, but now you have all these students who don't, who don't, well, it's, the kids are leaving the campus, and they're going, and they're blocking the entrance, so Kupunas not even hold into the library right now, because you have a group of ten students, who are just gonna be hanging out, doing whatever they want, and they're, and it's right on the fringes of the schools.
Okay, so what I hear you guys talking about is the corridor leading up to it. Yeah, like, basically, that whole corridor leading up to where the harbor in Uluvehi's is, is almost like.
Dark.
Yeah, that, dark.
It's on corridor, and if you guys are shining on right light, or what you guys did, the Haliakalana, the Kuli Avenue, and the community centers,
you see an uplifting, you can see it in the plants for crying out loud, you can see Hulu, you can see Kaala, you get excited about that.
I say start at the vet, look at the vet, Huayamake, I feel like worshiping candle when I pass the vet, did you see that wall?
The vet, where?
Next to Huayamake.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's horrible, it's horrible, Huayamake, you have to lock your hand, it's like, you just.
It's like, ooh, I like to drugs, I pass the vet, like, I feel very, you know, like, you're like chronic.
Okay, okay, guys, we're gonna wrap, I think I'm hearing everything that I need to hear, I'm doing a summary of some of the solutions. You guys know that I'm solution oriented, I will write this out, I will make a game plan, I thank each and every one of you guys for sharing openly with me, and, and giving, giving me your time.
But I'd just like to say one more thing, I, I just, I think that we need to let them know that we see them, and they're not gonna keep on running our community like this.
Hmm, nice, guys.
Let's stop being tolerable.
I like that, Derek, know that if you guys run the community group, the community law, uh, let, let us know.
Let's go.
Let me know too.
Let's do it.
And have to take our community back. Yeah, and I need you guys to, Derek, the polls, come on, just look at the polls and swipe up, come on. And by the way, we're coming on a responsible free casual at my to be.
And redesigned therapy, ladies.
We're gonna ensure this camp, oh, come on.
Okay, we got it, guys, let's move back to the counter, I think actually everyone went home already.
Can we pray, do you guys mind if we pray?
Yeah, let's pray, let's pray. Dear Father, Mother, we're so thankful to be gathered here tonight, we're grateful for all the hearts, we're grateful for the minds, and of course, the comments and thoughts that were shared as a group. At this time, we pray that we might be able to feel home. We pray that we might be able to feel light, even though there might not be light in some of the areas of our community, and in some of the situations that have happened recently. We pray that our educators in our schools, our counselors, our pastors, our coaches, our mentors, that they might have added strength. We pray that our educators in our schools, our counselors, our pastors, our coaches, our mentors, that they might have added strength. That we might be able to check in with our youth, talk with them, communicate with them, help them. Help us to be outward-facing, help us to look outward in, and see the hurt or the pain or the trauma that we might not be able to see, but we can feel. We pray that we'll be able to be our own beacons of light and strength to others. I think personally, I need to pray to continue to collaborate with government officials. I ask you to please soften their hearts towards Jesus, it's been super hard. It's been super hard to advocate for our community. It's been hard to ask for things that people think we don't need. I've been hurt by the things people have said about us. And I pray that we'll be able to come together, and not profile people, and not stereotype people, but think good things about them, say positive things about them. Help me that I might be able to lift my head up and not let it affect me, that I might be able to continue to lead and not get frustrated. That I might look out to the community and have other people help when I feel like I can't do it. Please help us with the resources that we need for Uluvehi's, for the boat harbor, for the quarter of Y-Nine. Help the people that I asked, help them to say yes. That when we ask it, they'll say, yes, we'll help, yes, we'll paint, yes, we'll give you the resources. We need people that are gonna say yes, people that are gonna come and say, anything you need, anytime you need, we're here. Help us to take back our community. Help us to heal these boys. I pray for them, each and every one of them, these boys. Help them to find better role models, help them to find better hobbies and habits and dreams. Help them to find things that will really help them to succeed in life. And when we see them, and when we interact with these boys, help us to love them. Love them and their families, not to outcast them, not to judge them, but to love them. Because they might be going through hard stuff that we don't understand. Help our community that one day, very soon, that we'll feel safer. And that families will be able to let their children out, and that we'll feel like it's a place where we care for one another. We know that we don't have control over everything, and we pray that that would give us patience. Patience to bear these afflictions and bear these burdens that we feel right now. Please forgive us for our sins, and please forgive us for our shortcomings, none of us are perfect, I am not perfect. Help us that we might humble ourselves and ask for strength, and know that only through thee we can do these things. We're grateful for this moment, I said, please bless each and every person in this circle that they'll get home safe, in the name of Jesus, in Jesus' name, in our name. We're grateful for this moment, I said, please bless each and every person in this circle that they'll get home safe, in the name of Jesus, in Jesus' name, in our name.